I wouldn't mind doing something for a year or two. I'm not quite ready yet.
You know Cordyce Brothers from the old...
So I feel like it's not worth...
A lot of conversations with Paul.
Everybody ready?
For, oh, business...
Ready?
Yeah, for sure.
Do you get it? We're going to call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here, Port Huron, St. Clair County, Michigan.
Commissioner Beeden.
Here, St. Clair County, Port Huron, Michigan.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here, Port Huron, Michigan.
Commissioner Rushing. Commissioner Rushing.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Here, Port Huron, Michigan.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here, Port Huron, Michigan.
Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda, item A. Somebody make the motion.
We're gonna add item A, 3A.
Gonna make that... Do I have a second?
Some over.
That's gonna be item T.
T.
On new business. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Approval, agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to... Oh, I went to the wrong one, sorry. I'd move for the approval of the agenda.
Support.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Those opposed. Minutes of previous meetings.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item six, proclamation for Lenny Brooks, Veteran of the Year.
Commissioner Bohm, I move to approve the proclamation, recognizing and congratulating Lenny Brooks, Veteran of the Year 2020.
Support.
Discussion. We've got a signed proclamation. We'll make sure the appropriate people get it to them. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item seven, consent agenda, items A through L.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion.
Carrie, was there anything in items A and B, the summary budget to actual report, that stuck out to you that you had a concern with?
No, the December report does not reflect all of the audit entries. It might look a little bit odd just because of how the CARES funding is coming in. Not all those entries have been made to move wages to the CARES fund for the public health, public safety wages because we have not received our final amount from the state yet. So, you know, you might see like the Sheriff's Department's budget might seem a little bit off, but it's for that reason. So, once we get those entries done, it'll look much better.
Okay. I assumed there was something like that, but I just thought I would ask. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Let's go to item eight, reports standing in special committees. Start with Georgia.
I don't think I have any. Any, now, we've, you know, just kind of started, started new with some new committees. So, visited the landfill this morning. That was very informative. And the healthcare review meeting, my first one of that was this morning. So, there's, there's a lot of good news happening, and our landfill is quite impressive. I know, pretty sure those words never, I would think, would leave my mouth. It's, it's a pretty cool deal. So, that's what's happening in my world.
Lisa.
Nothing new to report.
David?
No.
Duke?
Just echo what the vice chair said. I was there for, I don't know, three or four hours this morning, and it was impressive. It was very interesting. If you guys did a chance, you and Lisa, you definitely should make it out there and see your way around. And Matt does a nice job showing his, his work off. It was very good. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Are you guys able to pull up? I'm gonna just report on something we're working on with the school system. You guys able to pull that up? So, we had a meeting with East China Schools yesterday. They had their, they had a special meeting. Myself, Dan Casey, and Gary Fletcher were on that particular meeting. The schools are proposing to sell the two schools in the vacant land. So, if you look at that map, on the left-hand side of that map is actually Garing Elementary, the vacant land, which would be in the middle. And to the right-hand side is the Eddie Elementary, which is actually closed. Garing is still active. Garing, the East China Schools passed the bond. They are going to be out of that school in about the next three years. We have a developer that wants to develop the entire properties. Eddie Schools would look like a senior housing facility, which, if you've ever been to Yale, Michigan, downtown Yale, Michigan, they have an old school that they converted into thirty apartments. Lot of conversations about the vacant lands, some of the first-time homebuyer type of product. And then Garing, we're not, we're not sure on that. But the reason for the use of the land bank, St. Clair is not a core community. The only community that we have in St. Clair County that is a core community is Port Huron. When you're not a core community, there's a lot of things that you aren't able to do or incentivize some of these projects. These, taking on an old school and redeveloping is not an easy thing, right? So, by using the land bank with a agreement from the developer, the developer would essentially incur all the cost, all the expenses, anything that would go along with these transactions. So, it's not putting the county in harm's way whatsoever. We're really using it as that particular mechanism to open up for some of these redevelopment opportunities. The school board on Monday tentatively is going to approve the agreement. The county then will enter into a ninety-day due diligence period with Form and Brownfield, Phase One, Phase Two, and all that other stuff. There again, the developers are paying for all these. Then what'll happen as these projects come, when they get complete, they will actually be pulled out of the land bank, then they'll go on the tax rolls. One of the thing that was important for the schools was the, the schools currently don't pay taxes, obviously, but if a private developer were to buy these and take them out of the land bank, then the schools would be on the hook for the tax liability. So, that's another one of the big reasons that we're going to, to use the land bank. Jay's actually on the land bank board. This will be subject to final approval from the land bank. I just wanted to make the commissioners aware that we were working, you know, that we were working on this. And it's, you know, it's a pretty interesting use of the land bank. It was interesting, the attorney on the school board, the East China School Board's attorney, their firm represents five hundred and four school districts in the state of Michigan, right? And he was very impressed because they don't really use the land bank and do all these other things to help redevelop. I want, want a further preference. I mean, we have either six or seven vacant schools right now, with more, more to come. And these things, you know, tend to get a little difficult. Michigan State is engaged with metropolitan planning. Every year to eighteen months, they pick particular projects. Georgia, you remember, they did the Birchwood Mall up there and study different reusages, extremely thorough. Their graduate, graduate-level students, undergraduate overseen by professors, and they'll produce a report that, you know, different usage, so and so forth. So, we have a meeting actually with them on January twenty-ninth. They're gonna come down and take a, take a tour of it and everything else. So, you're gonna be seeing more, hearing more about this, but it's a pretty exciting opportunity to redevelop some of those particular properties. I happened to go to kindergarten at Eddie Elementary years ago, a little near and dear to my...
Really are building up.
Nineteen seventy-three. The building was built in the twenties. So, yeah, it's kind of weird walking the halls of that place. We got in there a couple times. I knew right where the detention was at, just for the record. Any questions on that?
Yeah. Are they using, you said they're working on a brownfield for it?
Yes.
Is that gonna be because of...
A brownfield plan would be put in place because demolition, obsolescence, you know, a lot of those types of things.
Yeah, obsolescence.
Capture, yeah. Yeah, those old schools. Garing's way newer and in way better shape, but when you get into Eddie, I know there's still some asbestos, you know, some of those old buildings just have issues that they, that they have to deal with and stuff, so...
But there's not a contaminated soil issue?
No, none of that. No. Schools had some pretty extensive reports that they had completed before. And there again, as part of entering, we will be doing a Phase One and a Phase Two on these projects. These things have been on the radar screen for about six months now. They did have a previous developer that wanted to develop, and that fell through. So, East China Schools then reached out to myself, and that's when we went and found the developers. Ironically, we had toured the school in Yale, and they had a level of expertise in already doing that. You could see the finished product and, you know, knew that very well, so they were willing to take that on. So, yeah, good redevelopment of a couple, a couple ISARS, to be quite honest, in your community. Hopefully, we'll learn some stuff going through this and be able to implement this with some of these other vacant schools we have. That is it. Citizens wishing to address the board. Do we have any citizens at this time?
Jeff, I just had one thing, two things.
Great.
Yeah.
Central Dispatch had a lean audit done by the state of Michigan, and the letter that got sent back, I know Carrie got a copy, I don't know if it went to all commissioners, pretty impressive report coming back from the state. They came back with, with high regards, and they thought that the, the people that were in charge of the audit and the people that were doing the work in that department did a, did a superior job. So, that, that was a, a very nice accolade for them. And then just to reiterate, the healthcare quarterly meeting that we had, when we had our first quarter, which was in, would have been April last year, things looked pretty doom and gloom from, from the report. We were at a negative position with our funding, and all of a sudden, we finished up the year with a positive twelve point seven percent return. So, I would assume we can expect that on an annual basis, if Carrie has anything to do about it. So, that's it.
Okay. And there's no citizens wishing to address the board at this time, so we'll go into unfinished business. No unfinished business. Item eleven A, the approval of the county dispersments for November two thousand twenty.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the November twenty, November two thousand twenty county dispersments in the amount of fourteen million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and forty-three cents.
Second.
Thank you.
Any questions on any of these? Roll call. Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
And for the two new commissioners, this is a little bit, this is a, so tonight's meeting is, you know, a full committee meeting. It was a little funky with our, you know, first meeting with the stuff, that's not normal. Normally, these things would have come to us previously. These particular items would have been on our committee meetings, then they would have been passed on to the full board, but the way that it just happened with those two weeks was a little, it was, it was not the norm, so... Usually, you would be seeing these things twice, so... Item B, approval of county dispersments for December of two thousand twenty.
That may be one of mine. I don't have a list in front of me, but I would make that motion to approve county dispersments for December two thousand twenty.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Policy, I guess Carrie probably can, you know, you talking about these next X amount of policies we've got? Would you be the one that are gonna explain it?
I, I can speak briefly on them. Our HR director, Diane Barber, should also be logged into the call.
Oh, okay.
But just very briefly, these next policies that you're going to see, as some of you will recall them for the new commissioners, we have an employee handbook that is quite old and outdated, so we have been going through the process of converting all of the information in our handbook into a policy format. So, these policies you see before you tonight are just a continuation of that project, taking what's in our handbook and converting them into policy format. So, over the next two or three months, you're gonna be seeing a lot of policies coming to you, and we hope to have everything in the handbook and the handbook eliminated by the first or second quarter of this year. But if you have any specific questions on any of these policies, Diane can address those for you.
Very good. Thank you. Item C, policy three twenty-four nepotism.
Mr. Chair, I move to forward the February Regular Board of Commissioners meeting to the recommendation to approve policy three twenty-four nepotism.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item D, policy three twenty-five.
Chairman Bohm, I would move to forward the February Regular Board of Commissioners meeting, the recommendation to approve policy three twenty-five, standards of conduct.
Support.
Discussion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item E, policy three four eight.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to forward to the February Regular Board of Commissioners meeting, the recommendation to approve policy three forty-eight grievance procedures.
Support.
Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item F, policy three seven three.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to forward the February Regular Board of Commissioners meeting, recommendation to approve policy three seven three, drug and alcohol and controlled substances.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, policy three eight one.
I would make a motion to adopt policy three eighty-one with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Policy three eight three.
Mr. Chair, I moved it forward to the February Regular Board of Commissioners meeting, the recommendation to approve policy three eighty-three, Fair Labor Standards Act.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item I, policy three eight six.
Chairman, I'd move to forward the February Regular Board of Commissioners meeting, the recommendation to approve policy three eighty-six, Whistle Blowers Act.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item J, the two thousand twenty-one dispatch training fund grant.
I would make a motion for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one dispatch training fund grant application.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The Park QBS professional service selections.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the Parks and Recreation Commission Qualification Based Selection QBS, recommendations for professional services as presented for the next three-year period.
Support McConnell.
Is there anybody that is on, that can speak on that? Is Mark, do you know, around, or Carrie?
I think Mark is. I sat in on, on all the, on the interviewing process.
Do you want to talk, talk about what the QBS is, Greg?
So, we interviewed, there was different, there was landscape architects, there was regular architects, engineers. So, we interviewed, there was, it was sent out to anybody that wanted to, to work for St. Clair County and wanted to put a bid in, and then we interviewed and narrowed it down to, I, I don't know the numbers exactly in front of me, but I think we had six or five engineering firms and four or five landscape architects. And so, what happens now is anytime we have a project, we've already narrowed it down to our, to the number of people that are gonna be doing the bidding on these projects. So, the idea is that you're gonna get a full response from everybody because they know that it's limited to, say, five different firms that are gonna be doing engineering. And so, they're the only five that are gonna receive our bid packets, and then they bid amongst themselves. And, and it was a long process. I mean, they had, it was, it was individual, going through a lot of paperwork, and then we actually did, albeit they were all virtual interviews, but I thought it worked out quite well, and I think there'll be a lot more of that going on even in the future. But it, it was an interesting process to be part of, and, and I think we've got some very qualified companies that are gonna be, gonna be representing us when we send out the bids for any park projects.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry to have a motion, a second. Any questions for Greg at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item L, boards and commissions reapportments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the board, board and commissioner reapportments as presented.
Support.
Discussion on any of them. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item M, the land bank authority appointment and reappointment.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jeff Bohm at large and reappoint Bill Greitop at large to the land bank authority, each for a three-year term expiring twelve thirty-one of twenty-three.
Second.
So, Jay sits on the land bank. Ironically, Commissioner Van den Bosch and I had a meeting today, and some land bank conversations came up. I think you're gonna see, the land bank's kind of been idle for a little period of time here, Jay. Safe statement, right?
Yeah.
So, we're going to actually be looking at some different options. I think you might see some re-engagement with it and that kind of stuff. So, it's, can be a real good tool and a real good mechanism for some of these redevelopments and that type of stuff. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item N, the Solid Waste Management Planning Committee appointment.
Chairman Bohm, I would move to appoint Kelly Correll to the Solid Waste Management Planning Committee as the Regional Solid Waste Planning Representative for a two-year term expiring twelve thirty-one of twenty-two.
Support.
Support.
Excuse me. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item O, the contract approval request for Conti Corporation.
I would make a motion to approve the request for Conti Corporation.
Support.
Anybody wants to give a little background information on that?
I believe, sorry, I believe we should have representatives from the sheriff's office logged in. We'll see if IT can go ahead and promote them to speak. If not, I can speak briefly on it.
Well, so it's not a half, it's five. So, if... You have to unmute themselves on their end. If you're listening, okay.
If you're on, you...
If you're listening, unmute yourself.
You have to unmute, unmute yourself, Sheriff's Department. This is a...
This is a...
Houston?
Houston? Good evening, it's Tracy DeCoste. Can you hear me?
Hey, we got you.
We got you. I also know that Sheriff King is also logged on, but I can speak on behalf of Conti Corporation also. This is a project that we have been working with the Controller's Office on. It's a second phase, as noted in the memorandum to the board. We're bringing our cameras from digital to analog, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm from analog to digital. There's about two hundred cameras that'll be replaced within the facility.
Yes, I'm on this walk.
I can hear Sheriff King.
Basically, you're replacing two cameras.
Two cameras. Two hundred, three cameras.
Yeah, this project was started several years ago.
It was started several years ago with Conti. And we were not able to replace all the cameras at that time.
They need to mute themselves. So, it was going to be done in phases, however, you know, for various reasons, there have been delays, so we'd like to complete the whole project right now. We have worked with Conti. They have been an excellent vendor, great customer service, so we would like to have them continue out with the project. The funds for this project are in the Public Improvement Fund, so they are there and budgeted for.
Okay. Any questions for Carrie? Roll call. Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item P, the contract approval request from the Community Education Network.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Community Education Network Service Agreement amended to include the additional network connection for Marine City District Court Building for a term from three one nineteen through six thirty twenty-four in the amount of seventy-five hundred.
Second.
Discussion. Anybody? Carrie, you want to chat, or is somebody who wants to talk on that?
Tiffany can speak on this. This is in addition to what we currently do down in Marine City.
Yeah, go up to the podium.
I think our microphones are at the table, so you might, there you go.
So, we currently use this roof stuff for some fiber for some various sites, and CEN is a subsidiary of this stuff. And we're just adding an additional site for fiber. Previously, when we did this report, we were using a wireless connection, and that was becoming hard to maintain and not enough speed. So, we're basically installing fiber to Marine City so it's a more reliable connection for Marine City this report. So, this additional amount is just for that purpose.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions at all? Roll call. Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item Q, Pure Storage Solution.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the storage area network purchase from Pure Storage Solutions for the Information Technology Department in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
You wanna talk about, a little bit about that? We got you here.
I debated if I should have said this. So, this is a storage area network with just hard-ride space for our media network, which is our computers that all the house employees of the county. And this is just a replacement. We purchased our previous storage area network in two thousand fifteen, so it's just new for replacement. We made the decision to move from EMC, our previous provider of your storage, to seem like a more high-performance solution. It's a company we've been watching for seven years, and feel very comfortable with them and with their support.
Any questions for?
Do not.
Roll call. Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item R, the Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to receive and file the Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report.
Second.
So, I would highly encourage, who went out there today? Georgia, you went out there?
Yeah.
You and, you hadn't been out there previous?
I had not.
Okay.
And actually, I didn't, I had to leave before we did the actual foot tour to go see it, so I need to go back out anyway.
Yeah, I would encourage the commissioners and Lisa and Dave.
That's for sure.
If you get an opportunity, it's a, you know, invested a lot of money in that thing. We really went out on, I wouldn't call it a win back in the day when we developed the bioreactor technology. Actually, that started really, Commissioner Hydeman was pretty instrumental in getting that off the ground like eighteen years ago, then it took us a while to come to fruition. Yeah, but I don't know, we probably spent five million bucks to develop that technology, but basically, we take septic from septic tank haulers, separate the liquids and the solids and then we put it into the waste stream. It breaks trash down really fast and produces a ton of methane gas. We have a contract with DT, I think we, about eight hundred thousand, right? Do it because.
That's what he said today.
Yeah, and just does some really cool stuff. That bioreactor, what was it, forty percent of our methane gas was produced from eight percent of our landfill in the, in the cell, you know. We do have a patent on that particular process. Someday, we would like to be able to take it to, take it to the market and do some, I'm sorry?
It's used to the life of that.
Yeah, yeah, and then it, it breaks trash down faster than traditional methods, so it reopens additional airspace. I could talk to you for days about landfills, I don't want to bore you about it. I never knew I'd know as much as I knew about landfills, but it's pretty cool, pretty cutting-edge, state-of-the-art what we actually do out there. And when you, when you get a chance to touch it, feel it, see it, you're like, whoa.
It's not what you would think when Georgia said today, I used to refer to it as a dump.
Yeah.
It's not a dump.
Yeah, no, they are energy-producing things.
That's a first-class operation.
Well, and even the, the care the staff takes, the place is immaculate. And it, the, it's just impressive from, from top, from driving in to going through their offices to see the, the DTE part, it, it's just, it's incredible. I had no idea it was out there.
Summertime can get a little gnarly in July and August when you get to the top of the hill.
Might be the reason I chose winter, which was it.
It's not the best place when they have a fire in the middle of the winter, you know?
Yeah, no.
Because a couple winters ago, they had a couple and it was cold.
Yeah.
With it.
No, so it's really pretty proud of the accomplishments that we've made out there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item S, the two thousand twenty-one Veteran's Service Grant Award.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one County Veteran's Service Fund Grant Award in the amount of sixty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Support.
Discussion on this. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item T, the Community Mental Health Board Appointment.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Jessica Tati to the Community Mental Health Board, District Three, for the remainder of a three-year term expiring March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Moving on to the Administrator's Report.
I only had two items this evening and now I only have one because Commissioner McConnell kind of stole my thunder on Dispatch's audit. I do want to congratulate them, though. The letter said that they had zero findings in their audit and that's very hard to do, so congratulations to Dispatch and all of the staff out there. And the second item is, some of you might receive a letter, I don't know if it will just go to the board chair, to all commissioners, from the State Tax Commission regarding our designated assessor. The paperwork, they have not received all of the paperwork yet because we are waiting on one signature from a municipality. It has been approved by their board and as soon as we get that formal approval, we will forward it on, so it's just a formality, but we did want you to be aware that if you receive that, that it is being taken care of. And that's all I have this evening, unless you have questions.
Motion for the Administrator's Report.
Submoved.
Support.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Miscellaneous business, any miscellaneous business to come before us? I'm just going to kind of plant this in your head and then I'll get Dan Casey in, you know, here in the near future, talk about this. So, the last large piece that we had was water sewer, infrastructure, everything else. Currently, the Magna Power Plant in St. Clair is getting constructed on it. If we had a large user today, like of a hundred acres, that, if that plant came again, we'd have nowhere to put that plant, period, okay? And it's something that, you know, when we look at it, these companies, you need ready development sites. These companies came in, you know, the county had cleared that land before, it was a hundred and five acres, it was ready to go, they already had the building designed, needed to get the shovel in the ground by XMO, right? That's, that's the reality of how these things work today. They don't spend two years looking for properties and do this, do that, you know? It pains me to think that we would have nowhere to put a hundred and twenty million dollar plant, three hundred and fifty jobs today. And like you said, I'll get Dan here, we'll talk about it. So, A philosophically, do we look at the county to try to get into a public-private partnership, identify properties, try to get some infrastructure to them? Does the county take on, you know, the burden of it? If you go to a small municipality, and you and I talked about this, they just don't have the capacity to do this stuff, right? There's only so much, so many dollars, right? And I think we really have to have a, you know, a hard discussion as far as where the next areas of development, does a county look to purchase, you know? When you look at, and these things take time to come to fruition. I'm not going to say that they didn't sit on that thing for a long time in the city of St. Clair, you know? I mean, so sometimes they're home runs, sometimes they can sit, but when you look at like the new taxing benefit of just the first plant for St. Clair, so there's plant one, then there's a phase two, then there's a phase three to it, after abatements and everything, because we just were at the city council meeting on Monday, so we talked about it, it's fresh in my head. It's five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in new taxes. That's, that's after the abatement. Well, Duke, you guys went through it with the ZF.
ZF.
It was a ten-year, nothing, then when it hit the tax rolls.
Now it's paying off.
Four hundred and something thousand, I think the county gets a hundred and seventy-five, you know, somewhere. It, it's substantial amounts of money. So, that will be a question that I'm going to, you know, pose to this board. Is this something that we want to pursue? How do we pursue it? What are some of the financing mechanisms, you know? It just, like I said, I want to put that bug in your ear, before, it was pretty hard to, well, you couldn't really talk about it because we still have a hundred and five acres sitting out there. No, it's not, no. Where's the next place that we would potentially be able to put something like this?
So, St. Clair is out of sewer and water?
Out of land, it's not sewer and water.
All, all that industrial.
Yeah, they have twenty-five acres left, but I mean, so somebody that came in, you know, this particular plant had to take seventy-five, sixty-eight, seventy-five, whatever that particular number was. You know, when you look at that down there, it goes phase three, so it's a hundred and twenty million now, but then phase two, phase three, it's over a million square foot. It'll be our largest non-utility taxpayer in St. Clair County and it will, if it's five forty-four right now after abatements, that number's going to double all day long, even as they build it out and stuff. So, it's, you know, it's real money and, but it can be really, really painful when you got to sit on those things for, you know, however long too.